Well, let's call the meeting to order. I guess at this point, we ought to, Lisa, can you take attendance?
Sure.
Oh, there you are.
Joe?
Here.
John?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Is he there?
Yep, did you hear? Yeah, he's here.
Alex?
Here.
Justin?
Here.
Jen?
Here.
I'm here. Mike? Mike? No?
All right, here.
Oh, there you are. Julie?
Yes, here.
He?
Here.
And Mary?
Here.
Okay, we're all here.
We've got everyone. At this point, we, I want to just let you know, if you have an hour, I'm sure you've already heard that we've lost a good friend of our, of our region. Mark Lyon has passed away and former first selectman of Washington. And I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Mark will be missed. At this point, I'd like to ask if there's any member of--
Can I just jump in on that note? I think it might be appropriate for a letter of condolence to go from the Board of Ed to his family and maybe from Region 12 to his family. You know, as I think Mary was saying earlier, that he was a selectman for the town of Washington for 12 years. And obviously, a big proponent of educating, you know, generation, you know, of students at, in Washington in Region 12. So I think that would be, it would be nice to kind of send a few words from, from our perspective, thanking his family for all those years of service.
All right. I think that's a good idea. Anyone else? Let's make it so.
Thank you. That's, that's great.
Yeah, no doubt about it. All right, at this point, I'd like to ask if any member of the public would care to make any comments on our, on any matter that's on our agenda tonight. I hear no, no desire to comment, so going once, going twice, we'll pass on the public comment then. There's one item on the consent agenda, the Board of Education Minutes of April 16, 2020. Does anyone want to take that off the consent agenda? Hearing none, that those minutes will be adopted. Megan, if you would want to give us some kind of an update on where we stand with COVID-19 and preparations and anything else?
Absolutely. So, we are continuing our distance learning. I've been told that we are expecting an announcement from the governor regarding the remainder of the year at some point this week. I've been told as early as tomorrow. I've also been told on Wednesday. So, we are waiting to hear more before we are able to do some plannings on how do we either close out the year in this same fashion in this learning environment, or if there is a reopening plan that we get to move forward with. So, we are continuing to find the balance between workload and mental health in our distance learning environment. The elementary schools have been looking at virtual assembly options. And Shapog is working on a weekly communicate, collaborate, and catch-up day. And this day has been coined by Kim Gallo. But this day has been created once a week to allow students to review learning. We want to make certain that we're not just pushing through curriculum. We want to make certain that no student is left behind in this learning environment. So having a day in which the students and the teachers have the ability to collaborate, make certain that we're assessing the learning, how much the students understand, and really make certain that we are actually meeting the needs of all learners in this environment. As I mentioned about the, the update that we're waiting on, May 20th was the last date that we had updated that we knew we'd be closed through May 20th. So currently, the commissioner has created six teams across the state to consider reopening conditions and requirements for the schools. So they are doing teams that are based on regionally, regional locations. So therefore, they recognize what may be right in central Connecticut may not be right for Litchfield County. So they're certainly looking at the different space and environment. Quite frankly, we have a better shot to reopen than Danbury would, for instance, knowing the amount of kids that we have in the classroom and roaming the hall. We probably have better options for some social distancing planning versus the sheer volume of students at some of the bigger schools. So there are a lot of things that while we are looking and we're not just waiting for those teams to say, here are some reopening plans, we are ourselves internally looking at what are some of those reopening options and what do we have to do? And that does not just include the logistics of being in the building. It also requires, what are the budgetary aspects of that reopening? What are the curricular needs in that reopening? What are the safety needs? What does that look like with feeding the students? So we're looking at all of the options as we ourselves say then locally, how would we reopen the doors for our students? But without that return date, it really leaves a lot of unknowns. We do not know what's going to happen with summer school. And from what I'm told, even when the governor does give the updates, we will not expect to know what's going to happen with summer school until later in May. This actually becomes incredibly problematic for us because this is the time in which we're already figuring out which students are going to be in summer school. We start posting for the teachers who would teach during summer school. We would actually be creating bus routes during this time. So not having that answer really does create a hardship on the district for when we are indeed able to return to school. We also, right now, graduation dates and plans, we don't have those things set yet. And also, you know, that idea of how do we do any kind of curriculum compacting? So all of those things right now are up in the air, not knowing when the return is. So every plan that we make has to have three contingency plans. But I have to tell you, the team, the administrative team, has been working together on this. And not even just, we connect not just daily, I want to say almost hourly at this point, when we're not working with our teams. But talking about graduation dates, the seniors, their rock painting is underway. Sadly, we had a couple of days that were rained out last week, so it's carried over into this week. We are currently looking at some graduation opportunities. And we are bringing our seniors into the planning process. So Tara, Kim Gallo, Mike Croft, and I will be meeting with seniors who volunteered to help us explore some ideas for a safe graduation. And I can tell you already, they're looking at resources we didn't even know that we had available to us. Turns out, everybody has an uncle or a cousin who does something fantastic. So, you know, whether they're talking about flyovers, or they're talking about getting different radio stations so people could be in their cars and tuned in, they're really coming up. The kids want it. We want to make it happen. And as long as we can have safety as our way to do it, we will certainly pull out all the stuff. So we will see what's happening with that. As for our grading, we are continuing to refine and explore grading during distance learning. I shared the latest iteration of the grading policy with our teachers today. The pass with distinction, pass and fail options, continue to, to be something that we are exploring, as well as to remain with alpha grading. So our goal is that do no harm grading. So one of the things that we're looking at is potentially giving some options and choices in which families can work with our counselors to figure out what is the best decision for their students during distance learning and how to measure their progress. So that's something that right now we're, we're exploring and communication will go out to families about that. We did run into some snafus with our schools. Some of the anomalies are preventing us from doing just a uniform change across the board. I do also want to let you know that I did have a family who notified me last week that they did have a COVID positive result that stemmed back to the end of January. We have not been able to trace that anywhere. I know that there's a lot of positives that, you know, had been false positives. We are working with our Department of Health as we notified them of the update. But it is one in which right now we're holding on the information for more guidance. But, you know, we're, we're obviously continuing to track and make certain that we know when it's healthiest for also for us to return, not just the governor's guidance alone. So that concludes my COVID update. There's any questions?
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Can hear you, Pete, yes.
Yeah, how is AgSTEM functioning in this kind of environment?
That's a great question. So all of our large animals right now are at a farm in New York and not the kind that your parents told you your puppies went to. It's a legitimate farm. And so we are paying for them to be kept there. All of our small animals went home with students of the agri-science. Nicole has worked with those families directly to make certain that they had Amazon gift cards so that way they can actually buy the supplies for the animals and they can care for them. So we weren't looking to be a burden on any families. And so far, we, we get some pictures that they're doing well. We get pictures of our, our lambs who are growing up. And each one of the schools, since they name the lambs, they get pictures of that. So to say, how's the program? The animals are absolutely fine. As far as our students, I think it's, it's not what they signed up for. I think without having some of that hands-on that's promised, it's, it's not the, the ideal way to start a program. But I have to tell you, right now, we, we have some amazing kids who are finding ways to make the best of this situation. Our agri-science teachers have used this time in order to help our students gain some of their FFA credits. And so we're trying to make certain that they get some of that merit stuff we can get. And I want to say out of the way because it's all part of being part of the FFA. But if we can get that, where then when we do return, it's really a lot of project space. We're looking more towards that STEM and what we can do next and being innovative. That's, that's what we're using this time for, is to do some of the bureaucratic part of, of agri-science.
How do you handle, how would you, how are you going to handle next year's students coming in if the school isn't open?
Well, once they come into our school, they are our students. So therefore, the first thing we would do is get a device into their hands. So it would be important that the 27 students that right now we now accepted that are not currently Region 12 students are able to get access. We would be working towards email. We would be working over the summer to make certain we can connect with them. I can tell you that we gave them all virtual tours. Our guidance staff was able to work with them to make certain that when they were making the decision to come to Shapog, they had a one-on-one counselor. They were making the decision with their eyes wide open. But it would take, it would take some orientating. And it would take virtual orientating if I cannot have them on campus.
Have you lost anybody based on the current environment?
We have not yet, however. I would not, I would not doubt that we may lose a student or two, those who especially came because they wanted the hands-on learning. I can't say this is ideal. No.
Doesn't, I know, okay.
John?
Yeah, I've been listening a lot to talk radio these last few weeks. And both on WATR in Waterbury and TIC in Hartford. People are mentioning a movement to have a statewide graduation on the same day, something to, that's special for our seniors to celebrate and be most memorable, that everyone graduates at the same time, on the same day. Have you heard anything about that?
There was, and there's a petition that, that people are signing. And I think that was much more so when people didn't feel graduations were going to happen. You know, there were some towns that were not thinking in terms of graduations. So I think people feeling like kids needed to have closure, and they deserve this closure. I think that for us, it was never an option to not graduate our kids. It just came down to when we can do it. So statewide or not, we're going to make certain we honor our kids. And I'm way too competitive to let a statewide graduation beat what we're going to do here in Region 12. So for me, I say we up the ante and we make it wonderful for our kids.
Okay. Mary, you have something? Or is that just a thumbs up?
I just wanted to say that, that yes, I agree with Megan.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. We will move on from that. I'm not going to have a lot of chairs report tonight, other than to say that if anyone would have told me six months ago, we'd be sitting here doing this, and we'd be in the position, and I would have told them they were crazy. But here we are. The one thing I can say is, is we've had a tremendous degree of, of good spiritedness and hard work from all the people who are Region 12 people, all of our, our teachers, our staff, our administrators, our, every other, every other employee that we have has been working hard to deal with a very trying situation. And most especially, the, those members of the board. And I want to thank you very much for, for keeping your, your sense of humor throughout what is otherwise a situation in which nobody is terribly happy. But we, here we are, and we're going to educate these kids, and, and safety will be first for them. And I sincerely hope we can figure out a way to give the seniors a graduation. So that's, you know, we've got to, we've got to try as hard as we can there, consistent with safety and, and public, public benefit. Megan, you have something for us?
A couple of updates. But first, and I want to just pay you back off what Greg said. I cannot thank you all enough. And, you know, I, I've said this before, and I feel like I have to say this in every meeting, our teachers feel comfortable that you are going to support them. They feel incredibly vulnerable right now. You think about, right now, their audience is every parent, everyone who's in that house and feeling like they are performing for, for a much wider audience than they typically have. And they are being vulnerable because they know they have your support. And I think that, that speaks volumes. You know, I, I hear stories of other districts, and I, I stop talking because I do feel like I'm bragging because the support that you've provided, the care that our staff has given, the fact that I can say every single student is accounted for in Region 12 is not something they can say in every district. And I think that right there goes to speak to who Region 12 is. It is about relationships and connectivity. And we've just shown that in, in the, in the worst circumstances. And that's why I will tell anybody, everybody can be good when times are good. Greatness comes in adversity, and this is greatness. And I just, I think we all just need to really recognize your contribution to make that happen. So I'm going to start with a thank you. And so, things that we also need to think is that it is this week, it is teacher and nurse appreciation this week. And it is one where I have to tell you, we always appreciate our teachers and nurses. We always recognize the efforts, but I think no greater time than now. And I want to share with you all, one of the things, we have a lot of things that are happening. Our PTOs have gone above and beyond to celebrate what, what's happening in our schools and our teachers. And if you'll afford me one moment during, I would like to share with you what went out to our-- can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
This went out to every one of our teachers. And if you look, it says, "A tribute to SBS teachers and staff. Thank you for keeping us together even when we're apart." And as you turn the pages, it is, "We're all in this together," and you have pictures of our students from Shapog. And it really just goes to, "Thank you for all your hard work. We miss our teachers. Shapog proud." It was page after page of our students and families smiling at us to say thank you. And I will tell you, it, it really does brighten up the day. It really does lift the spirits. It really does let us know that, you know, we're-- I think only goes to say, this is how Region 12 does it so well. So a super thank you to the SBS PTO for making certain that our teachers and staff feel appreciated during this time. So sharing a little insight into that.
That's so beautiful.
Isn't that so amazing? So-- And, and it's just, it's, it's a gorgeous thing. So additionally, things that you, to update, our second cohort of agri-science students have been accepted. I'm proud to announce, we have 44 students joining the 2020, 2021 agri-science cohort. 27 of those 44 are from towns beyond Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington. This will bring our total number of agri-science students to 90 agri-science students for next year. Yes, you know, to say we're constantly watching what's happening with our numbers. But I have to say, it's, it's a really, it goes to say that even in this environment, we had students choose to be part of Shapog. And so, again, kudos to the staff and agri-science staff. As you know, tonight was originally scheduled to be the setting of our referendum, given the governor's executive orders, 7S, Section 4. Our Board of Education had passed our budget, and each town has given their consent for our zero budget for the 2021 school year. So that is why our, our agenda has been altered. I do want to congratulate our CIEC scholar athletes, Owen Moore and Isabel Eddy. We will be honoring all of our award-winning students during this year, whether we have to do it virtually or however we're going to do it. I do think it's important that as a board, we have a chance to recognize our students and their achievements. So not looking to, to change some of those accomplishments and recognitions. Also, speaking of virtual celebrations, Shapog will be celebrating the Steven Reich Award Ceremony. We will do this virtually. So staff, students, and community members will be invited to view the ceremony virtually on Thursday, May 21st. So that is something in which we are making the commitment. Scott Warcoven has done a wonderful job of getting the video clips, making certain that it goes smoothly. So again, making certain we're honoring those traditions. I do want to also bring to the board's attention, tuitioning decisions are being made based on capacity right now. We have some interesting enrollment things that are happening. As you know, with COVID, we have a lot of New Yorkers who have now come to stay in the region and are exploring our public schools. So kudos to us. We also recognize that people's financial circumstances have changed. So things are changing by the day, including our regular enrollment. We recognize some families who have been tuitioning in may no longer be able to afford tuitioning in next year and may make the decision to go back to their, their local district. Right now, what I've said is, anyone who has questions if they will be able to financially afford that, we will hold their seat till as close as we can to the deadline. And then at that point, I do have to open up, we do have a waitlist. But everything can change, knowing that our numbers are, are, are changing. And one of the things that we made a commitment to is priorities given to students who are living within the region. And we would not, we would not increase our resources, our, you know, our cost of resources in order to have more kids tuitioned in. So it is one in which some of these ever-changing dynamics are making me wait a little bit longer on some of those decisions that we know need to be made. So it is one, I just want the board to be very aware that our enrollment is, is a little bit up and down. So there are, right now, the, I'm watching WPS's numbers, specifically in kindergarten and first grade, as well as Burnham's enrollment. And then our other bubble right now is our ninth grade bubble. So just, so you all know, those are the, those are the watched spots. And the last thing, just to share with you for an update, is that our spring newsletter will be going out on May 11th, that week. So we did move forward. We had a lot of things to celebrate, so that will go to publication. And Debbie had worked hard with Ben, and they put it all together. It looks amazing. So can't wait to put that in people's mailboxes. So if they were on the fence on whether or not they should come to Region 12, we're giving them more reason that they should be here. Questions about the updates?
Jen?
When you say you're keeping an eye on kindergarten, first grade for WPS and for Burnham, what, what is it that you're keeping an eye on? What is--
Right now, WPS potentially has 22 students in first grade and 19 in kindergarten.
19 that are signed, that are registered for kindergarten? Wow, that's a great problem to have. I'm so, I'm so surprised.
It's truly a different one. And so this is where, again, looking at what does that mean for us in allocation of resources? It's, that's, that's what I'm watching.
So for those numbers, just as a, I know it's hard to say, but are a lot of these students that are coming in new to the district? Or, I mean, I'm just, are they, are they New Yorkers? Are they, I mean--
Some of them are Washington Montessori families. Some of them are new to the district. So what we've done is, in, when I say 22, that's what we're watching for. That's the inquiry. So we've been tracking inquiries, but until I actually have the registration, I'm not holding that as a hard number. So there's no alterations, but it is making certain that we have a strategy in the event that they do.
And what about Burnham? What's the--
Burnham, so the bigger class right now is the second grade class. So this year, in K2 at Burnham, we had 38 students in those rooms. The second grade class is a larger class. The third grade class is my very small class. So the third grade class is my buffer. So now that the second grade class is going up to the upper level, we then look at, what can I absorb for more kindergarten students and new enrollments? One of the things that I've always made it a point to do in my two years is that if somebody had tuitioned in already, they have first priority to continue versus a new student. We, we want, we want them to feel like they're, they're part of Region 12. So unless something drastic happens, and that is something that we will watch for, is one of the things that we say is enrollment will always be a factor in what we can, what we can accept for, for new students.
Thank you.
Any other questions about update? Okay.
Yeah, just to clarify this, you're saying that there could be a population from the weekend, house owners, families? So that would displace or reduce the number of tuition ins?
It would reduce the number of tuition in families, I could take that.
Okay.
But right now, as I said, based on what we have in the continuation, my numbers have always been, you know, when we do budgeting, it's always been on continuation versus increased enrollment, because we do want to make certain we're not over-promising what those returns to the towns are. We're holding true with that, but we also recognize finances are changing for people. But when I say to you, there's a, we, we're feeling a demand for Region 12, which, you know, this is, this is what we designed for. It's a wonderful, but it's, it's also one in which it's not going to be as incrementally, and it's, it's never as clean as we want it to be. So it's making certain that we're looking at, how do we take what we currently have and reallocate it to make certain that we are providing the best educational environment? Other questions about the update?
Lisa, you had something?
I did. You didn't mention Booth. So I'm just wondering, is there any changes, increases in Booth as well?
Yeah, Booth is also having some New Yorkers, and from what I'm told, some from San Francisco. So we, we are getting those inquiries. We're, we're holding on to, to Booth. One of the reasons I didn't talk about Booth, I will be updating the multi-age with Booth later on. But it's not the, it's not the volume that I'm seeing in the other two towns. So, yeah, so we still have room to grow.
Okay, thank you.
Next year. All right, well, the last thing as part of my report is to let you know that we do have one appointment for next year. Amanda Phoenix, who had been a .6 English Language Arts teacher, will move to the 1.0 vacancy that we had had. We had hired that for a one-year position for the end of this year, when we had a resignation. Amanda Phoenix will move into that position, and we are going to actually reduce the .6 ELA position and not fill it. And we'll talk about that after. That concludes my report.
All right. Go on to John's report, Treacher's report. Well, actually, where do we, we lost our treasure.
John's right there.
Oh, there he is. Oh, there he is, they keep moving around.
Yes.
Yeah, um, just a few highlights, uh, the financials are posted in the packet. Um, as of April twenty-fourth, all the fund balance, funds had healthy balances. One-hundreds is, was the most predictable uh because the salaries are, um, there's a little variation. Uh, that had a two-point-three percent, two-point-zero-three percent remaining balance after encumbrances. The five-hundreds had a huge, a very healthy um percent remaining. Um, that's mostly surrounding the transportation funds um due to COVID. You know, the lack of field trips, athletic transportation and the like, other than uh standard bus routes. Uh, although we are continuing to pay All-Star to to come back, you know, to keep uh, to keep their, you know, head above water. So um, I'm not sure where the um, if the drivers are getting paid or not yet. But I guess Nicole will elaborate on that, or Megan. Um, so at the end of the day, there was a eight-point-eight-eight percent remaining. However, there may be some uh significant expenses uh because of the COVID, the extra unforeseen expenses related to COVID. Um, at the last meeting, we also talked about um uh the possibility of paying for some of the elementary school repairs, rather than take it out of the one percent fund, which was was scheduled to 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 happen, uh, we we talked about perhaps, and 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 the board will hear about this uh in more, you know, in the future, but um uh, we are going to try to to, uh, I think it was about ninety-two thousand dollars worth of repairs to Booth, Burnham, and Washington Primary School. And we're, we're thinking about paying for that out of the elementary school fund, which also has a pretty healthy balance. I think Nicole said it was, you know, somewhere over a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand, so um so, uh, yeah, those, that's what, you know, when you think about it, that's what those uh, those treasure uh chests are for. That's about it.
Hey, thank you, John. Uh, we'll go into committee reports, Mary, Cave?
I don't really have anything, I haven't really spoken to anybody at Cave. Um, I have you, Greg, because I know they have um programs for the board, heads of the Boards of Education. So I didn't know if you had gone to any of those.
Yes, I have gone to a few of them and I have, uh, I I hear from them every day, multiple times a day. They are staying engaged. Um, I mean, we're all, we're all grasping at, at what what do we do? This is a, this is a new situation for everybody, so that, you know, we're, I think Cave is trying to uh do its level best to to keep, give us the options that there are out there and have, sharing information on how other districts are doing. Frankly, I can tell you, I think in terms of the way our district is is performing and as as things are working here, we're doing better than 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 most. Uh, by a long shot, it's, a lot of them have challenges that we don't have. Uh, we we're fortunate that all of our kids uh have access to, uh, you know, good internet connectivity. We're lucky, we're lucky that we have made the decision a few years ago to, or maybe we're foresighted enough to have made the decision to make sure they all have a device. Uh, I mean, a lot of schools started without that, you know, it it, that being the first issue they had to climb, where we didn't have that problem. So we we started out a lot further in advance, and one of the reasons is because we were on top of these things, but Cave is trying to help everyone come up to to terms and and to have equity, and it's a real challenge, um, and I think they're going to help us, so. That's where, that's my take on it, Mary.
It's good, I believe that they uh, that they care to keep in touch with everybody and keep you informed. And I always figured that you were going on to those um online programs that they had, so that's why uh I knew you would have something, even though I didn't really have anything.
Yeah, I wish, I wish I had a lot to give to you, but we have really been way out in front on a lot of issues, so I don't really have anything that I can share with you, but we do have weekly uh call-in meetings with the, with the board chairs uh and and Cave people, so if if should I hear of anything I find out or anything I see, uh, I pass on to uh to Megan, you know, it's very interesting because one of the towns in the state uh decided that it was going to conduct, not one, but now they've had two town meetings that were done on a drive, drive-through basis. People drive through, leave their windows up, they they get their IDs verified, and they vote thumbs up or thumbs down. And that's the town of Vernon, they've now done two town meetings that way with people driving through. So uh, I don't know, I mean, there's a lot of things people are trying to do to deal with these issues. Okay, um, Mike, what do you have for curriculum educational program?
Actually, we spent the bulk of our time talking about um two issues that I I think Megan is going to be addressing later on in the meeting, correct, Megan, I think you're going to be talking both about um Booth and multi-age configuration as well as um grading in fourth quarter?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes, you 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 hit both the topics that we will go into in better detail with, but um, and
I'm not going to steal your thunder, then, I'll let you talk a little later.
But I do want to thank, you know, Mike, publicly, you have shared what you're doing at your school and helping us learn from from what's happening elsewhere, and so those, those moments really matter, so, so thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome, this is, this is not just a moment for the village, but the entire state and country, apparently.
Okay, um.
I can tell you in New Jersey that those teachers got nothing, they got no professional development whatsoever on what to do for distance learning. I've talked to several of them and they've gotten nothing, so we're way ahead of the curve on that.
John?
Some of the cities in Connecticut, Danbury, New Haven, Hartford, they don't have the hardware, the kids don't have internet connections. They're, they're not scheduled to even start distance learning till, I think it was uh middle of of this month, if not June. So, yeah, we're ahead of everybody.
Okay, um, let me move on to uh finance and operations, Alex.
Well, we have been extremely busy. Um, we had a meeting last Monday, a regular meeting, where we went over the financials, which John has uh updated you on the uh financials. We discussed uh open contracts, uh Nicole has done a sterling job of going out and resolving them. Uh, the biggest one being obviously the bus company, and we came to an agreement that's that's going to net us a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, but at the same time, all the bus drivers are going to be paid. That was a contingency of this uh for multiple reasons. One, we can't afford to have them go find other jobs and not be available next year, we need those bus drivers, so uh, we have uh uh insisted that they get paid. Uh, we talked about the uh planning on the referendum of of what items we might uh uh include in the referendum with respect to uh Chappal, which we'll discuss a little bit later. Uh, we also, well, that was basically it, the things we haven't discussed. Then we had a meeting, a special meeting uh on Thursday uh where we got some information back. Uh, on Wednesday, you should all know that we had an expedition. The uh, we 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 sent a contingency of Megan, Don, and Pete up to the roof where they uh met with the, both the suppliers, the installers, and an outside group uh to look at the roof, um, and we'll talk about what happened from that, but I just want to say that uh Pete should get extra pay this month for combat duty.
Wait, you you let Pete go up on the roof?
Yeah, I deserve combat pay for making sure he didn't push anybody off.
Yeah, well, we couldn't stop Pete, let's put it that way. Hold on a second, that was about it, uh, except for things that we're going to be discussing later in the meeting. Uh, does anybody have any questions? Oh, I don't think that's me, okay, I think I'm all set, Greg.
Okay. Good enough, we'll go on to labor negotiations, Jim, uh, I think, Jim, you're muted.
Yes, yeah.
Can we unmute Jim?
Ben, you're the host, can you do that? All right, if, if Ben cannot, is it okay if I just speak on behalf of Jim to let everybody know that the nursing and the nurse negotiations will start on Wednesday? Um, and so we will begin with exchanging, we are going to have to do this in Zoom, so it'll be unusual. Um, but we've at this point coordinated a date to
Yeah, the most difficult part of that is going to be, how do you handle the caucuses that take place at these meetings, where you all disperse and go into your separate rooms?
Well, there's a beautiful thing in Zoom called a breakout room, and you can put people into their different rooms, and we can set timers and uh, nobody can go into each other's room until the timers have gone off, so.
Well, hopefully the technology works.
See how this goes.
All right. Uh, Julie, strategic long-range planning?
Hi, yeah, so the committee members are continuing to work on the long-range goals. And we have signed the contract with Sandor Max on the marketing front. Um, Megan, maybe you have more on that, but they are working on and are moving forward as far as I know.
Yep, no, they 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 are.
Do you know, Megan? I'm having trouble with my internet.
Oh, okay, but I I I'll fill in a little bit if that's okay, Julie. Um, so we did meet Julie, um, Julie, Mike Croft and I um had a chance to talk to them, we were talking to them about branding and what we want to what we want to look like, um, so at this point, they are working on both our branding as well as a booklet for our design that we want to put out to everyone. One of the things that we're trying to make very careful of is that we're not, we're not selling the towns. Um, at some point, Sandor Max is working with the individual towns about selling their town, what we're doing is we're selling our schools. And I I want to make certain that that's, that's a very clear distinction, we're incredibly proud of our towns. Um, we're incredibly proud of the option that that we provide to people for education, but um, as far as, we are part of somebody else's sales pitch on why to move to the towns, but we don't necessarily do it as the reverse to to have one town of the other, so um, Sandor Max absolutely understands that, they are talking to us about what are our nine talking points? Um, what do we want to look like, what should it be, and at this point, we kept saying, um, the theme right now we're going for is academic warmth. So, uh, or if you say scholarly warmth, we want to let people know that, you know, we are a house, you know, place of academia, but it's also the connections and the things that that make us special in that connectivity that that really does stand out in Region Twelve. So they are working on that, on the branding of it, and I look forward to their first iteration.
Okay. Good, well, let's move on to new business, um. Megan, Teresa, you've got a proposal, you've got something on distance learning grading?
Well, let's not skip over Donna Larry with the roof, and then we can, is that okay if we
Uh, well.
That out of order.
Unfortunately, that's not on my agenda, so.
No, it's not number one?
You don't have that as number one?
No.
We do.
Well, clear, clear, clearly, I don't have the latest version, so why don't we go to Don then?
Wow. Hello, everybody, nice to see y'all, miss y'all. Um, last Tuesday, as Alex said, we met up on the roof, um, the question was
What, on Wednesday?
So long ago, um, the twenty-eighth. So the question was, do we have an emergency? The answer is no. Um, we found, like Alex said, we had, we had a scanner company on the roof who had been on there the night before and who had scanned twenty-seven locations that they found that were wet. Um, those locations, when we went up on the roof, uh, Silk Town was there and Firestone was there. Silk Town came prepared to fix any wet spots that um may have been leaking through into our space. There were none that they could repair, the only two wet spots on the roof that leak in to the space are from the air conditioning units. So with that being prepared to uh make repairs, we all thought it would be a great idea to sample some of the areas that had been scanned the night before for wet. Um, and what we found was that there, we we opened up four areas and three of them were wet. Um, what we found was the roof is made of a number of layers with the insulation, three to four inches being at the bottom, a number of plies, and then a one-inch fiber board, some more plies, and then the top mineral surface and asphalt. And what we found was that the the water had infiltrated down to the one-inch layer of fiber board. Um, and we, we determined that um, we do not have an emergency, if we, if we consider what we did in the past. Our last scan was back in two thousand eighteen of, July of two thousand eighteen. And then in the fall of two uh of two thousand and nineteen, we made repairs to those areas that scanned wet. So now, in um April of two thousand and twenty, almost, well, one and three-quarter years since our last scan, we found some more areas. Um, so based on the information and the timing, we feel that the decision can wait so that many, the voters can weigh in on a referendum to do the roof and how they are, they're going to do the roof. Um. Now, Firestone and Silk Town, the people who put the roof on, were present, and they, they had a a few ideas, but narrowed them down to two, one, the same as ours, a restoration, and two, a complete rip. They don't feel that a complete rip and replace is warranted, because like we've, we've seen through our evidence and and our due diligence, that of a hundred and eighty thousand square feet of roof space, only approximately two to twenty-five hundred square feet of it is actually wet. And they felt, both of the companies felt, that the roof was in very good shape and is a candidate for restoration and continues to be if we monitor it. What we decided at our finance and operations meeting was to do just that, push the the decision out. We can wait a year or so, um, we felt that uh we could use the existing scanned areas as a barometer. So in six months, I could spend a little time and a hundred dollars to make a core cut to see if the wet has infiltrated any deeper, so that's what we came up up, did we lose our chairman?
Greg? No, give me a second here. There we go, I think I'm back. Okay, any questions?
Can I speak to that for a second?
Go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, uh, just so that the board knows, uh, we got an estimate. Uh, well, one of the things that we asked Megan to do was to get numbers for all our options. Uh, this is before we realized that the option we were going to select was to do nothing currently. But the option for doing the quote-unquote restoration came in just a little over a million and a half. Surprising to me, the number for putting a brand-new roof on the building came in at four-and-a-half million, which was a lot came in at four and a half million, which was a lot lower than we had thought. So I just wanted you all to be aware of the two numbers of what, as of today, it would cost if we were to go either with a restoration or a replacement. And if we wait too long and don't do the restoration, you can only restore a good roof. You can't restore a bad roof. So if we waited too long, we would have to go with a new roof. And that's all, that's just what I wanted to add. Thank you, Greg.
Okay. We've lost Lisa. She's lost power, so.
Oh, no.
Jen?
So I just have a couple of questions, just because I'm trying to remember all of our roof conversations over the past several years. And I guess for me, the concern that I have is, is that really, if we're, first of all, the first question is, is it's not an emergency. So what, what is the timeline? Like, what is the ideal timeline? Looking at next year, or they're saying we can do in two years? I, my concern is, is that if we keep giving the public different stories, then when we come to ask for money, I, I worry about support.
Well, it seems to me on this one, what we did is we, look, we, none of us were happy about the decision to go out and take from a fund that we had, we had sought for a different primary purpose. Although we had broadly selected it, so we had enough in there that we could do it legally. But we weren't thrilled with that prospect. So what we did is we did more diligence. And the additional diligence allowed us to see that, that it appears that we can get more out of that roof than, than we originally thought. We did another scan of it and we did coring. And that's something we, we hadn't done. And we, we needed to make sure, before we started the restoration, that we had a roof that was going to be able to be restored. And that's why, and we hadn't done it for over a year, so that's why we did it again. And we, we came in with a, with a good situation. And rather than press something that we did not feel was as much of an emergency as we had been led to believe before, that we would, we would go in and maybe go in a different direction. At least that's where we were with, when we discussed it in operations and finance. And so I, I, I don't think there's a question of, are we giving different stories? There's a, well, I've heard this attributed, I've heard this attributed to, to John Maynard Keynes, which is when the facts change, I change my opinion.
I, I'm great. I'm not saying, I'm just saying that we were, we were going to, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we were going to vote on this referendum two meetings ago. So I'm just saying that now we're revising it and we're going out and we're, we're doing it differently. I'm not saying no one's not doing their due diligence, but my concern is, is that we really need to make sure we have our ducks in a row before we go back out to the public with a different roof story again. I, I feel like we're having too many scenarios of a roof. And I, and I now, because I've always been under the impression that this roof is a really huge concern and priority. And now I'm, now I'm hearing that it's not an emergency. So I just, for me, if I feel that way, I would imagine that the pub, some of the public is going to feel that way too. So I'm just suggesting that we really are sure about what we present to the public the next time and stick to it. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, I understand, but when the facts on the ground change, you have to decide whether you're going to stick with the same, the same approach.
Thankfully, we didn't approve it then before we changed it, right?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Two meetings ago, we were going to vote for that.
Yeah, that was before, that was before we did the last bit of diligence, which was to go up on the roof again, which was.
Correct, but had we done that before we had our meeting, Greg, we, we wouldn't be in this position of changing. That's what I'm saying.
You're, you're right about that. And I think that what we're trying to do is we're trying to respond in a situation in which we don't have our usual ability to do things.
So my point is, is that going up and doing the scan previously should have happened before we put it on the referendum. That's all.
Right, but we haven't, we haven't put it on a referendum. We never did. We, we.
But we were about to.
No, we were not going to put it on a referendum. We were going to simply do it. We were going to do it with the bonding referendum we had in place. But we decided that we could, we didn't have to do that right now. Obviously, we'll monitor. If the situation changes, we may have to do something. But the problem we were getting into is, i- is we did not want to go forward if we didn't have to go forward. If it was not as much of an emergency as we thought, we didn't think we should, we should push on it.
Then we should never have put it on the referendum. That's all. I'm just saying.
No, and last year, it was an emergency. Last year, they were telling us that you've got, if you don't get this roof done by next year, you're going to be in trouble.
And now that's not the case.
And it turns out through further diligence that we may have some additional time.
Right.
So that, I mean, it's, it's not that we, we, look, in a perfect world, we would know everything before we knew it, but we don't live in a perfect world.
I understand, but it's a lot of money. And we want, if we want the, the community to support it, then we really have to do our due diligence. That's all.
We did our due diligence. That's why we are where we are.
Yeah, again, that's right.
I mean, if we, if we had done it, we, could we have done it before? Possibly, if the school hadn't been shut down, if we hadn't had six emergencies we were trying to deal with, if we didn't have kids, we're trying to teach remotely. And if we didn't have a situation in which we don't even want people in the building because of the potential ramifications for it. I mean, there's a lot of reasons why. We, we probably would have been nice if we had done the diligence sooner, but it didn't work out that way because of where we were. We, we had anticipated being able to do it, but we also anticipated being able to have a referendum.
I just, I just encourage, I just encourage a very clear path for the, the roof for next year or whenever it's coming. Because I think we all need to just know it and be on the same page. That's all.
Of course. Pete? Pete, you're muted or something. We can't hear you.
Mary has had her hand up before me.
All right, if you're yielding to Mary, I'll recognize Mary. Mary, you're muted.
Can't hear her.
Yep, there she is now.
Okay. So if we're not going to do the, the roof right now, where do we stand with the air conditioning units and doing the, the other building for the trucks and things like that?
I think we should do them. Alex, isn't that what we talked about at operations? Alex, you're muted.
Well, they're coming up as an agenda item.
Yeah, it's kind of on the agenda, right.
All right, I, I don't know what's going on, but everybody is getting muted. Alex, you're muted. That's no good telling him. He can't hear either, apparently.
Yeah, I can't. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. I think Megan muted us all there for a while and we have to unmute.
I, I'm not in charge right now, so we're, we're under Ben's rule.
Oh, okay. Well, Ben muted us all then. We, we, there was, there was a thing in tandem. We had to do, if we were going to do the HVAC and the roof, we had to do the HVAC first. There was a, there was a time lag on the HVAC because they have to build the units, anywhere from 10 to 12 weeks. We were getting under a crunch. So we were pushing forward faster because we, if we were going to do the HVAC and the roof, we needed to get that order in. We're now not doing the roof at this time, but we are going to propose that we do the HVAC. Those units are 26 years old and have a life expectancy of 15 years. They no longer make the parts for it. Don has been using rubber bands and chewing gum to keep them working. And that is something we're going to talk about later. I think it's, it's later in the agenda. Is that correct, Megan?
That is correct.
Yeah, but yes, we are going to do that, propose that, and we will discuss the garage.
Okay, but I have a question about the roof again. We wanted to do the air conditioning first before we did the roof because if we did it the opposite way, we might damage the roof. Would this, is there a possibility that when we go to do the air conditioning units, that we will damage the roof that we have and we would have to do it right away?
We discussed that. And there are, on the roof, there are pads that are set up. And where you have to go off the pads, we're going to put plywood down so that there won't be undue pressure in any given spot. But yes, precautions will be taken to make sure that we do not damage the existing roof. It's my understanding, Don, that these units get picked up by a crane and basically put down. So it's not like we'd be moving half-ton units across the roof. You'll have workmen walking across the roof is what you'll have.
Greg?
That's correct. The pads are there for that purpose.
Okay, just checking.
All right, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get Lisa back into the meeting. She's trying to call in. I don't know if, if, if she can't get in, maybe Ben, you can give her some assistance and try to help, see if she can get, get her back into the meeting. I gave her the phone number to call in. I don't know if there's a password on it, so.
Greg?
Yeah, Pete?
An answer to Jennifer's question. When we were on the roof, all of the contractors that were on the roof basically said to us, it didn't need to be replaced at this time. That was what's behind the decision, more or less. So there, we questioned all of them. Don was there, superintendent was there. They felt the roof could last longer than replacing it next year or the year after. That's why that decision was made.
John?
Yeah, a couple of things. It appears in, in the discussion that we had at the FNO, it appears that most of the leaks are, the origins of the leaks are under the HVAC. And it's hopeful that when we replace the HVAC, we'll stop the majority of the leaks. That's number one. Number two, I don't feel that we're misleading the public or, or giving them mixed signals. And I accredit this to mostly Megan, Nicole, and Don. And, and the public should thank them for doing their research, finding out the imperative need to replace the roof this year. It just so happens that we can get another year or two. No one really knows. I, I think they're going to do sampling next year just to see, it's like a cancer. See if it's spreading. If it starts to spread, then we need to act. But, you know, the best thing, even though I voted against it, the best thing we ever did was give Megan the reins and let her take charge of this. Because she definitely determined that right now, the public doesn't have to spend a million point seven. So hopefully that'll happen in a year where there's not a whole heck of a lot of other things going on that's going to be a huge expense to the district. So I think the public can understand that it's not necessary this year.
Okay, Alex?
Yeah, I just wanted to also point out, unlike many of the meetings, this was a 5-0 vote. We all agreed that we should postpone the roof for at least a year. So it mean, it was a unanimous vote.
Jen?
Good meeting.
I, I appreciate the work and the hard work, actually, that Nicole, Don, and Megan have done about the roof. I'm just saying that it's been a question for many, many years about the roof. I'm thrilled that we can put it off. I just think that we just have to make sure that when we do come to the voters with a plan with the roof, that we really are thorough about it. That's all. I think that that's a reasonable request. Because if we're saying it's been an emergency for a long time and then we say, oh, we got it scanned, we can put it off for another couple of years, I just don't want it to backfire on us. That's all.
This is good observation. Appreciate that. Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you, Don. Now we'll go on to distance learning and grading.
All right, I'm unmuting myself. All right. So this is, I'm, I'm going to say that with everything that we've had, I am incredibly proud and I, I just, I can't say that statement enough. The administrative team, the decisions, how we've weighed this out, we've batted ideas around. We looked at every single student's GPA as we were making the changes to see what would happen with every trial that we did, with every configuration that was out there. So not one iota of this was taken lightly. Everything was taken with the gravity of, if any student wants to get into college, what does our choice mean for that particular student? And, and with that said, we, we came down around some, some fluctuations and really bringing the families into it. And I will turn over to Teresa to talk a little bit about where we are today.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So as, as Megan indicated, we didn't rush to make a decision. We really wanted to be very thoughtful. And in the meantime, staff had an opportunity to provide input. Even students and families were also contributing to the discussions that we were having. And at this time, we're really more comfortable with the philosophy of fair isn't always equal. And what I mean by that is looking at offering families the option, two options. And one would include continuing grading and having the letter grade show up as they have been used to on report cards. And the other option would be to offer a pass, fail, or pass with distinction option. And certainly for extenuating circumstances, we will look at incompletes on a case-by-case basis. But we really felt that if we only went with one option, children could be harmed in that particular option without that being the intent. So to have the students and their families talk about this, to have them also spend time with the school counselors, to really think about what decision makes the best sense for them, we really felt that families really deserve to have the opportunity to discuss this with their students. And that was probably the most comfortable option that we came up with, is really giving them choice.
So with that said, what happens is, the default option is that the students can stay with the alpha grading, the, the grades that they've always known. We will put out to the families at the end of this week what's the, the grading choices that they have. The guidance counselors will work specifically with each individual family to talk about what it means for their child's GPA, talk through some of those, you know, implications for how the student is doing. The statement that we said early on is that do no harm. And the best way to do no harm is that if parents can evaluate what would happen with the grading equally and make that decision that they feel is best for their student, given the trajectory. We know that not every student right now is able to have access to, to the sports in their house. We also know that there are some students who, right now, if we took away their grading, it would negatively impact their GPA. So in making this decision, we are allowing us to truly evaluate students on a case-by-case and make certain that they are not going to be harmed in any way by the closure of school, the school building. The school continues. It's just the building that right now has been impaired. We also have been working with colleges and universities to make certain that they are very comfortable with a pass/fail option. They know to expect that from schools around the country. So us providing that option is not going to be foreign to the colleges and universities. So it is one in which we want to make certain that we're not entering into any discussion, misleading any families, but giving them the most amount of support, the most amount of information so they can make the decision that's best for their child.
Okay, questions? Alex?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, if I choose, if I'm a student and I choose pass/fail, is that for all courses or just individual courses?
No, you, you cannot, you cannot shop courses. So it says, no, it really says, either you can carry on and you can continue to be graded as you've always been graded, or if you feel like you cannot perform at your peak performance, then at that point, you'll do pass/fail. Now, the thing is, in Power School, when you have a pass/fail, it does not create a GPA equivalent. So it's essentially just taking a knee and we would not count, that would not count against the child in any way.
John?
Yeah, this question is for both Teresa and Megan. Looking down the road with distance learning, and I'm thinking about some of the online or AP courses and that, and a lot of colleges do it already. It's basically 24-hour, the possibility of 20 And a lot of colleges do it already. It's basically 24 hour, the possibility of 24 hour attending courses. And any, any, in the, in the public school system, is there any room for students taking a course and getting credit for a course? You know, through distance learning?
Yes, it currently, right, it currently exists. We have virtual high school and we have had that for several years. So yes, students can take courses virtually and the state does recognize the credit. So the board is able to do that. We have that in our policy.
Okay, we already do. Yeah, I understand. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Nicole, you want to give us a financial update?
Yes, hi, good evening. I'm sorry you can't see me, but my internet is sketchy, so turning off the video helps. I just wanted to update on the financial status now that we're in this sort of new territory of COVID-19. As John and Alex had mentioned, we did finalize negotiations with All-Star. All of the drivers were returned to payroll as of Monday of this week. And we are giving them a percentage of their contracts to help with their fleet and operating expenses so that they remain in business so that we can rely on them again as soon as we start up, whether that be summer school or in the fall or later date. We also are, had offered, and they graciously accepted, to provide a $7,500 bonus to All-Star to use to pay their drivers as a return to work bonus in the fall to make sure we get our drivers back. We did get some indication that a few of them were pursuing up other opportunities and our drivers have been with us for a long time and are valued. They do a good job for us. So we did want to provide that extra for the drivers who are facing significant hardships at this time, especially for the period of time that they were laid off.
Nicole, may I interject for just a moment? Because I do think what the board also needs to know is what came from All-Star was Nicole's suggestion to do that was the first district that did that. And they felt that we really cared for our drivers. And I, that absolutely came from her negotiations and working with them and trying to see how she could incentivize to bring them back. So I just needed to share that as an accolade and again, showing that people matter to us a great deal.
Thanks, Megan. So as John had pointed out, the savings on the bus contract, because we also are not going to have the field trips and spring sports, we'll realize about $190,000 worth of savings for the year, which will be put to good use on other COVID expenses that we weren't expecting. And I want to talk a little bit about. So I'm sure many of you have heard about the CARES Act. And there is educational assistance being provided to the state of Connecticut, Department of Education. It's $111 million. And although they have not determined exactly how they are going to disseminate that across the different school districts, the preliminary information that we're being given is, given is that we'll receive 83% of our current Title I funding level. Our current Title I funding level is $29,000, which would mean our share of the CARES Act funding would be $24,000. I have set up new accounts in our chart of accounts that are designated specifically to track expenses related to COVID. We, we have been tracking those expenses and we have already incurred more than $24,000 in extra costs. So we have exhausted the anticipated CARES Act funding. FEMA is making available to educational systems reimbursement for supplies and PPE now and ongoing, depending on what our reopening looks like. So I will be making an application on behalf of Region 12 for reimbursement of some of those supplies when that becomes, when they open the portal and we can do that and we get some of our costs under our belt. That's another avenue that we'll be pursuing for some reimbursement funding. Just generally speaking, we're watching our finances in a different way than we are accustomed to doing at year end. The costs that are on my radar are additional needs for distance learning as that continues and what summer school may look like, what the fall may look like. Unfortunately, all the work we did to turn our deficit in food services around has been reversed because while we continue to pay our staff, which is very important to us to take care of our people, we no longer have any revenue from that program coming in. So there's nothing to offset the cost of the program. So the deficit that we've been working on reversing is now growing again. We have been receiving quite a few unemployment costs. Not from our district because we haven't kept our people employed, but people who were recently employed by Region 12 but had left for a variety of reasons prior to COVID and have lost employment from other employers will now be counted against us because we fall into the look back period. So that's going to create a pretty significant unemployment exposure for us that was unanticipated. And I won't, I haven't gotten any of the statements from the Department of Labor because they're so far behind in processing claims that I haven't been able to see what those chargebacks to us will look like sort of on a per employee basis. So I'll be able to update the board a little more of what that may look like once I start to get some of those benefit statements in from the Department of Labor as they process through those claims. Another class that we're watching very closely that other districts are experiencing, it has not hit us yet, but we're keeping an eye on it, is when employees who are employed by us but do not take our benefits have a spouse that may be separated from their employment, they would need to get their benefits from us. And that does create a reason for them to hop onto our benefits. So I've done an analysis of all of our employees who don't currently take our benefits, who may need to take them at a future date. And that would affect next year's budget much more than this year's budget, but that could be a half a million dollar swing on our budget if our worst case scenario happened and all of those employees had to hop onto our benefits. We're not planning on the worst case scenario, but we are watching that, you know, there may be some instances of that that result in considerable expenses to us. Another expense that we weren't anticipating that we're now planning for is our need to store excess heating and diesel fuel that because of our closure, we haven't used what we generally use. So now that's another variable we need to track is how much are we going to need to store and for how long? When we initially closed, we had put all of our ordering on hold other than anything that was needed for distance learning and COVID. This week, working with Megan and our admin team, we opened up the school budgets, but we asked the administrators to hold to 80% spend of their budgets. And our, what we anticipate doing is in the coming weeks, as we continue to evaluate the costs and expenses that are needed to sustain distance learning in account for the exposures that I spoke of above, we'll work with the administrative team to release more funding for their use. We do need to be prepared for what the next phase of educating our kids look like. And we want to get the funding that our admins need into their hands so they can prepare for that. And the one last bit of unfavorable financial news is that we got our quarterly report from our classified pension for the period ending March 31st. Unfortunately, we lost over a million dollars in quarter three. This represents more than three years of growth and contributions into our pension. I realize we're in the same boat as everyone else in the market, but it's still difficult news to process. This likely means is that our actuarially determined contribution for the 2122 budget is going to be significantly higher than what we've anticipated in past years if we want to keep the pension funded at the current level of 92%. So we'll have to talk about that and see what happens with the market over the course of the next 12 months. And that's my financial update.
Well, that was a font of good news. Any questions?
I have one. Is managing that pension fund, I guess, a lot of, a lot, a lot of pension funds did take a hit, but are they in real risky investments?
No, we are not in risky investments. We're very well spread across different levels of risk, but the majority of our risk is in moderate to conservative investments. And I don't think that what happened to us is any different than what happened to everybody. It's just that now we're going to have to wait for it to come back like everybody else is and see what happens with it.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to, back to Megan for booth free school multi-age status.
Okay. So as you saw, my message went out to the booth free families and we shared that with Region 12 at large, that next year we will not be moving to multi-age booth free school. I still believe strongly it is the right thing to do for the school. I still believe that it opens up dynamic opportunities. I'm really sad right now that we're not going to be able to create some of those enrichment opportunities for the students of booth next year because of how COVID has altered our trajectory. That said, right now, we are postponing it. Does not mean that we aren't going to do it in the future. But it also means that when I presented my budget to you, it did have that there was a reduction of two teachers at booth free. And so I did want to share with the board how we are absorbing some of that staffing in order to make certain that we are able to educate our students in a single grade level model. So the first thing is, I had mentioned at the beginning that we had a teacher who moved over to a full-time FTE and that we dissolved a .6 English Language Arts position at Chapag. That position will be shifted over to booth free. Additionally, we will be looking at some of the positions that we have that are not currently classroom positions and are more about enriching positions and reallocating staff so that we can cover the vacancy that we currently have. So our statement has, has really been, and I still feel it very true, is that we are looking to make certain we are taking care of the people that we have. And it's not about adding positions right now. It's about cutting close to the bone so we can continue to operate to the level that our students have come to expect. And it just means that right now, our, our ability to prepare the teachers, our ability to train, the ability to make certain that the students are ready and comfortable, it's not available right now. Knowing that we may start off next year in a different environment, you know, we don't know what COVID is going to do tomorrow, never mind what's going to happen next year. So it's going to be very important. We take the students from where they are and see how we can recover from some of the distance learning that may have lost some opportunities. And I think knowing if we put on too many initiatives at once, we have teachers who are already feeling the stress of everything going on. I'm not looking to, to to make something work on the back of our teachers and to mentally tax anyone. So again, I believe it's the right decision moving forward. It's not the right decision right now. And it is about care of people and I think that's what we should be in the business of. So right now, it's not about adding money to booths. It is, we are able to use what we have or reallocate it. And we're going to make another great year for our kids in Roxbury. So I just didn't know if there were any questions about some of those decisions and how we're moving forward with that.
Okay. Any questions? All right, so we'll move on to action items. First item is to consider, if appropriate, approve that Region 12 schools entered into a contract with Train for the replacement of the HVAC units at Chapag that it costs not to exceed $926,525.54. Who's going to lead this?
I will.
Pete?
Yeah, this is my opinion. I've expressed it to Alex. I have no problem with the company. But the board of it has fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers from the three towns that you don't give out a contract of this magnitude without putting it out to bid for other companies. It doesn't mean you can't choose the highest bidder, the lowest bidder. We have that option. But I can't think of any of our towns spending $900,000 without bidding a project now. So I have no problem with the Train company. It was on the roof with them. And I think it looks bad for us when you give out a contract with no bidding. And I think it's wrong for us to do that. Even if we wind up with Train, that's fine with me. I have no problems with the company. I don't think, I don't know if they're the best company. I don't know much about them. Don is very confident with them. We've had them for a long time. So I don't have any mistrust of them. But Russ is a board. We do have responsibilities when spending the taxpayers' money without bidding.
Alex? Yeah, um, one of the things that we were concerned about was the timing between Train and the, and the roof. I'm wondering, because we're not doing the roof, if we don't have an extra couple of weeks where we could go out to Carrier or Amana or one of the others and get a bid on it. I am positive we're going to end up with Train. But for the sake of looking proper, that we did this properly, I'm wondering if we shouldn't take an extra two weeks and have Carrier or Amana or there's a couple others that I've looked up that are, that are very reputable companies. As I emailed to Megan, Train is the Cadillac of the industry. But then again, as I said to Megan, maybe we should be looking at a Lincoln. You know, so I am not sure how I come down on this, but I just wanted to make the board aware that this is a potential issue, that we've only gotten one quote. It's, you know, for 900 plus thousand dollars. And it's really what the board feels comfortable with.
Jen? Can you mute it? Oh, there you go.
Yeah, there we go. Okay. So I agree with Pete and obviously there was discussion last time about times of the essence. So I think it would be a great idea that we get other bids. Train is great, but I just think that it's really a good idea that we follow policy.
The only thing I wanted to add is that at the meeting, we discussed this and it seemed to me that one of the principal issues or principal concerns is the fact that, look, you could put it out to bid, but I think you'd have to make sure the bid spec was, was very, very carefully crafted. Because when you put items in and out of the roof, you, the idea of using the company that provides the current units is because that, that way you get the same unit in and out. You don't have issues with it not having the same curbing, it not really being the right size or scope. And then you end up making amendments to the roof and before you know it, you didn't spend 900,000. You know, you got a bid for 800 and then you went and spent a million through, you know, as you're, as you're, you're going through and making those changes. So I'd like to hear from those voices as to, that explained it to us. I mean, Don, I don't know if you have anything to add here as to reason why it makes sense to go sole source as opposed to, as opposed to bidding it?
Well, the host has shut off my picture, so please excuse that, but we, we had, okay, hey. There. You're correct. The, the issue is that we do have 26-year-old units. They were expected the last 15 years. When we looked at the, the options to replace these units, the best way for the district in terms of cost and timing would be to replace them in kind with new units of, of a newer model that fit the exact openings. If you in fact change the model to a different model, you will be looking at the potential for structural work, for curve work, and potentially opening up the classrooms down below to change the duckwork going into the systems. Right now, the approximate cost of the structural changes and the curbing changes is about $140,000 estimated. The control systems that control the existing equipment is also a train control system. equipment is also a train control system. That system will always speak to train. We have upgraded the um, control systems in the agri science project to include a tritium Niagara that's more of an open platform and we are moving in that direction. However, to abandon the train system would probably add uh, additional cost in the fifty thousand dollar range. Um, this particular quote that we have upgrades what is there so that it'll, it'll communicate to both the new units and the existing control system. Um, I don't, you know, in terms of going out to bid, that is your decision to make. I'm only here to give you the facts of, of the situation and what you have. The um, you know, the, the, the committee had, had asked, well, you know, how do we take advantage of this time? And um, we can take advantage of this time by doing this particular project. We spoke to the factory in North Carolina, um, the training factory. They're presently at sixty percent um, capacity. They have the ability to get the units within ten to twelve weeks and feel that they can get them sooner. Um, right now the, the factory is in North Carolina and it is, that state is beginning to open. And more and more people will be going to back, back to work in that factory, which um, they feel would speed the units up. So you know, there, that's, that's really all of the, all of the um, information, you know, we were, this particular company has the ability to self perform and provide, provide a project manager on the site, which would typically save you about twelve percent because if we do go out to another company who doesn't do that, we'll have to provide somebody to oversee them. Um, the, the, those are the facts that I've got.
Uh, I'm sorry, Jen.
You're muted, Jen.
I know. John had his hand up first.
Yeah, just a question and then a comment. Don, is this train company, uh, do they have regions? Or are there competing train installers throughout Connecticut? Competing?
This is the factory distributor.
Which would install?
Any, 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 any train distributor will have to go through this distributor to get their units.
All right, do you feel any value if, if we were to put this out to bid? Do you think the companies would tend to sharpen their pencils? And um, knowing that they're competing uh, more so than just awarding it to one company?
Um, that can always happen. I, you know, the bidding process does, does do that. Um, we, the, the, the board um, charged the superintendent with that, that duty and um, she did along with Nicole um, you know, speak to train in that regard and asked for their best and final offer.
I would agree with Pete. I'm not going to vote for this because I think it's, it's our obligation to the taxpayers to get the best price, the best product for the best price.
Uh, Greg?
Yeah.
I just want to make clear, I have no, I have no problem with train. I have no issues with train. I expressed that to Dawn, the superintendent. Uh, as I said, I just think it's an issue of responsibility that we look good. And that the board always looks proper and good. We can choose the highest bidder or any bidder we, we want. If we feel good with train, they're in the ballpark. We can choose train. I'm just concerned with our image. That's what I'm concerned. And the superintendent image of how things are handled in the school. That's my, my issue is not with the company, it's with us.
Jen?
So also, so forgive me for not knowing this, but would train, when train comes in to do the work, do they, do they um, bring all of, do we have to bid out other trades to help assist with the installation or do they do it all? Is there electrical? Is there other trades that we're going to be needing for this project?
Train's price includes soup to nuts. They would self perform every function of the job. Including the rigging, any electrical work, any plumbing work, any roof, not roof work, but uh,
Um, that's, that's something that you're flooring with, with others as well, as far as connectivity?
I'm sorry?
Like is, is that one of the, that's one of the numbers that, that may fluctuate because we may be able to, to work with someone else or is that something that?
No, there's only one number in flux and that's the, the integration between the control system that we bought for the Ags, Agri Science project and the train um, control system that operates the units that are presently in the building. Um, when we moved to Agri Science, the Agri Science project and added additional air conditioning and additional units, we wanted to use an open protocol, so that's why we did not purchase a train control system for that part of the, of the job. What we want to do, our group, our facility group, is to utilize the, the new um, protocol that we put in for the Agri Science project to springboard and cover the entire district. So i- in other words, we can tie into the elementary schools and begin to in the future control and control boiler controls and heating and, and cooling, et cetera, in an effort to um, to reduce our carbon footprint and, and improve our efficiency and gain savings in energy. Um, the train's control system would have been um, cost prohibitive to expand it throughout the whole district and to um, it is proprietary. So we would have to call on train to make any, any changes to it, so to speak. So we wanted to move away from that, but the problem is that we have, we have a, a number of existing units that talk to it. So the only item that's in flux right now, train, their, their quote has soup to nuts. They, they, they will, they will take out the existing equipment and replace the existing equipment. And when they walk away, everything will be up and running. The only part that is in flux is the integration between their control system and the new control system. And we're, we, we spoke to, we had a meeting today with that group. And uh, we should have a number by tomorrow morning to handle that, that integration.
And that would be separate than what trained, obviously. So that would be a separate bid or how does that, would that? How would you do that?
Well, I don't know, to be honest with you, I don't know what the number is going to come back at right now. Um, I just have a gut feeling, but I don't have enough to, to tell you what the number is. So I don't know whether it falls within, you know, our policies at the moment. I, I really don't know the answer to that. I do know this, that these guys, these people have been on our job now for over a year integrating the existing new systems. So to have to pull somebody else in to do that would be um, costly and time consuming and counterproductive, but I, I don't know the answer in terms of cost right now.
Alex?
Yeah, uh, two things. One, completely off the subject, just so people know with Zoom, if you hit the spacebar, it will take you from mute to unmute and back and forth.
That's good to know.
Um, Don, you had mentioned in our meeting that there would be some cost or savings. Are you now thinking there would be no savings by using our, our control system?
Well, the answer to your question is yes, there will be some savings to using our control system because the savings comes in. If you went to a Carrier or a McQuay, a York or an Aon, you would have to change, they would not be able to talk to the existing communication system we have in the building. So right now we have a fifteen units on the roof. And we have a, 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 a hardware, a piece of hardware, a computer in, in one room in the facility room in the, in the school. That computer is wired to all fifteen of those units. And it goes through a control system to get there. So there's some other hardware in between it. Well, right now those, that, that, that hardware has trained software on it. And those fifteen units on the roof have trained, are trained equipment. So they talk to each other. So if you change the, the unit from a train to a McQuay or a York or a, or an Aon or, or, or any of those or Carrier, you would, they would no longer be able to talk to our, our existing software program, which in two thousand and nine, before I got to your, your district, you guys spent a hundred thousand dollars installed.
Yeah, so we would effectively, if we did go with someone else, we'd have two different systems running at the same time.
Well, we're going to have two different systems right now, but they, we're, we're going to be able to phase out the existing train system over time. If you were to start from scratch, you would have to replace that control system, still integrate it with the existing system that we put in for Agri Science, but you'd have to rewire the entire system and that's where all that cost comes from. You know, pulling out the controllers and rewiring them back to the soft, the, the head and hardware and stuff.
The last question is, is timing. Um, if it takes them, let's be optimistic, ten weeks, if, let's say we were to go tomorrow and tell train, yes, go. And it takes them ten weeks to make the units. How long do you think it'll take to get them up here and install?
They've given me within a, a two to three week window that they can be complete.
So you're talking worst case scenario, fifteen weeks, best set thirteen weeks. Cause I'm worried about getting into next school year. Uh, we don't want to be probably having cranes over the building with kids in the school. So we do have still sort of a hurry up mentality.
Well, that, that is one of your considerations and, and like I said, they, they've talked to the factory and they may be able to beat that twelve to ten weeks down to eight to ten. So that's, that's the information we've got right now.
John?
Yeah, you said that uh, train has been working on integrating a new system uh, off of our old system. Have, have they been doing this at their own expense?
No, we're, we are. When, when the Agri Science program or project was bought, in that project is a control system to control the heating and cooling equipment in the Agri Science program. We did not want to use a train system of train program to do that. We wanted to use an open protocol, something that later down the road, we don't have to call train to care for it, to service it. We can call anybody we want, anybody we trust, anybody who's got a, a good price. That's one part of the system. That's the new part. What's existing in there is there's fifteen units on the roof that are presently talking to a piece of software that's on a piece of hardware, a computer in the building. And they're all wired through controllers to do that. Now that's a proprietary system. If you put any other Honeywell, Siemens or, you know, any other system in, you, you'd end up replacing the controllers, replacing the head and computer, the software and rewiring to all of those fifteen units. That's, that's the, that's the increasing cost you would, you would incur if you do not just take the existing system you have and upgrade it a step at a very low cost and um, tie it in and integrate it to the, to the new system.
Any, any speculation or prediction as the, the percentage of the total contract would be to uh, for a, another uh, HVAC company to bring us up to that system? To the operating system?
Well, like I said, you, you guys spent a hundred thousand dollars change, changing from Honeywell to train in two thousand and nine. That's what it costs. Control part of that system, that's what it costs for you guys to do and rewire that school to the controllers that talk to the, that train system. There used to be a Honeywell system in it. And, and you, you guys spent a hundred grand changing. That's, that's the potential. I, I don't know without going out in this, you know, on paper and, and bidding it. I, I don't know the answer, but I know that. I, I could tell you that, that it'd have to be rewired, all new hardware would have to be bought, the software would have to be bought and it'd have to be all integrated together.
Joe, did you have something?
It sounds like um, I, I see each point. Obviously, we want to get a couple more bids and it's obvious that it's going to be more expensive because you can't really fit a square peg into a round hole. But that being said, what Pete had brought up was we want to make sure, again, we're doing our due diligence and making sure that we've exhausted as many bids as possible. Question is, how long will it take to get, say, another one or two more bids to compare? Will it take weeks? Will it take a month? Is it going to jeopardize us making the decision with train?
Um, train's always there. You know, they'll be there tomorrow. They're an eight billion dollar company. Um, the timing aspect, to be honest with you, um, I may end up having to get an engineer to write the scope of work. And in terms of putting it out on the street, you're not going to limit it to one or two bids. You'll limit it to, you know, how many bids come in. I'm not entirely sure that the district, you know, Pete said that you could take the highest bid. I'm not entirely sure the district rules allow that. Nicole may be able to speak to that. Um, but I, you will not get it in by school start. That, that much I know. You know, it is a job that could, that could go on in the winter and, you know, well, uh, I, I, I can't say that either. Because the, the, many of these pieces of equipment have heating components in them too. Um, so it would have to be carefully placed so that, you know, we don't do the job in the time in which we need to heat.
Why don't we just ask a couple of companies, the superintendent, business manager of how long it would take them to give us an estimate? That's Joe's, that's what Joe is alluding to. Why don't we?
And at this point, it's, it's been me who's been in contact. I, I don't want to mislead to think Nicole's been in, involved with this at this point. It's been, you know, John and I have been talking to people. It was whoever the vendor that Don has identified and I worked with them in order to generate a quote that we would talk about. Um, we did that for both the roof and HVAC. Uh, when we originally talked about it, it was only looking at train because we, we saw that the footprint that was on the roof was the conversation that we had as a board. So we didn't entertain any other vendor because it would be at that point altering um, the, the cutouts, et cetera. So at this point, if the board would like us to do that, we can certainly take a look and, and see what they, that would be adults that we would look for them to do is what does it look like to raise the curbing? What does it look like to reshape? Um, and what does wiring look like? So all of those would be considered adults into the quote that they would offer us.
Well, let me ask this. Why don't, why don't we ask another one, two, three companies, how long it would take them to give us a bit? If it's, if it's six months, five months, four months, we could go back to where we are now. I'm just concerned with us, not, not the, the, the job itself. What I'm concerned is the board of it. And members of the board of it.
I don't disagree, Pete. We want to make sure we're protecting ourselves. It's, it's what we continually say. So um, Nicole had something to say, Greg, wanna?
So I just want to make sure that the board understands, it sounds like what you're asking for is to get a few more quotes from contractors. from contractors. That's what we have now is a quote from Train. Bidding's a legal process, so we can't reach out to individual people and ask for a bid. We would be asking for a quote. When bidding, that's a process that has to be followed. You know, you have to dot all your i's, cross all your t's, put it in the newspaper, seal the bids, have a bid opening, all of which can absolutely be done. But you wouldn't, you wouldn't go out now and pinpoint individual.
I used the wrong word. I used bid. I should've meant quote.
Um, and, and to Don's point earlier, if you want a process where you don't have to go with the lowest bidder and you wanna be able to negotiate with specific bidders, then you would put out an RFP or a request for proposals. And you would evaluate those proposals against each other, and that gives you the right to negotiate with those people who made the, the offers and the proposals. Where a bid, you take the lowest bidder, or else you're gonna get a bid challenge.
Okay, yeah, that's another, that's another angle.
You know, I, I, the, the thing that's getting me here is, is I mean, I don't even know what we're talking about here. I mean, if, if you wanna make sure that we get the lowest best-able pri- the lowest price for the, for the work, then you need to put out, you need to put it out to competitive bidding. That's the only way you get the lowest price. Because anytime you go out to individual contractors, you've already, y- you've already eliminated the ability to get the lowest price because you've selected the contractor. So, you may or may not, depends on who you selected. But what I'm worried about here is, is that we are putting ourselves in a position unnecessarily. You are not gonna find another company that's gonna come in here and provide us soup to nuts, uh, uh, what do we call it? A turnkey operation on these HVAC units for less than Train can. And primarily, it's because you're gonna lose a hundred thousand or more on controls and you're gonna lose what? A couple of hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and forty thousand on curbing? By the time you're done, you've told the person they need to come in with a price under seven hundred thousand dollars. In fact, under six hundred thousand dollars, and it's not gonna happen. So, all we're gonna do is we are gonna lose the construction summer season. We are gonna put ourselves into the fall. We may put us into the heating season, and then we can't really install it. And at the end of the day, we're gonna look good, Pete. We're gonna look really good. Because at that point, Train's gonna say, okay, now you've decided on us because you went out and bid this thing, and guess what? The price has gotten higher because you waited another year or you waited another six months. And the, the, I don't think we accomplish anything other than a show of making ourselves look like we are accomplishing something here. I, I just don't see it. And, and the other thing I think you've gotta recognize is that, um, we're, i- it's gonna take a, i- if we're gonna put this out to competitive bidding, it's gonna take at least a month or more. It may take six weeks because Don's gonna need an engineer to write the spec. Because the spec has to carefully provide for everything that makes it apples to apples. It does us no good if you get a quote or you get a bid without specs and somebody comes in and says, I can do the job for six hundred thousand dollars, and then they end up handing you, uh, you know, a quarter million dollars or more in change orders because, oh, you know, th- th- this didn't say that I had to use the same curbs or I couldn't redo all those, and boy, it's gonna cost money to redo all those. And that's what happens when you, when you go in and you try to freelance it. And when you go out and ask for quotes, if you don't give them a bid spec to get the quote, something that really specs out the job, you're gonna get apples and oranges and, and grapefruits, and that's what you're gonna have. And I've, I've seen this. I, I've, I've had enough experience in construction contracts and I've had enough experience in Region 12 construction contracts to know that that's, that's where I think you're gonna be if you don't do it right. I think Jen was, had her hand up.
Jen, you're muted.
Still muted.
I tried the spacebar thing, Alex, and it didn't work.
Oh, darn. I don't know why. Mine does.
No, it's all right. I'll work on it. Um, I just think it's best practice, right? If it, if we're, if that's how we do things, we should just get the quotes for, for just, for the purpose of doing it. We should do it always. And if we get out of the practice of that, we should get back into it. That's what, that's simply what it is. That's it. Bottom line, best practice.
John?
I'll ask this question again. Are there more than one carrier company that can install this? Maybe from New York State? Maybe there's two or three in Connecticut? At least get bids other than the distributor to do the job? And it could be Carrier. It could be three or four Carrier companies. Why is it only this one company? They could probably be, do it cheapest, but at least we could get bids from the, you know, from, from companies that install Carrier.
John, bids or quotes?
Train, excuse me, Train.
Bids or quotes?
May- maybe, maybe quo- quotes first. Could, is it possible to get quotes and then put it out to bid? I guess it is. So, maybe that would be the short track to get, uh, quotes from, from more than one, you know?
Can I just, can I ask, I was gonna say, can I just ask a favor? I think just because we keep throwing the words around, Nicole, you do a great job of explaining the bidding process versus going to a quote. And I think one of the things that we need to know is that right now, we can't have done anything to impact a bidding process, and that would get us into a lot of trouble. So, Nicole, can I just ask, so that way, everybody knows how the process works. So, that way, as we make this decision, it's because we understand how, how that happens. So, is that okay if I have that, um, request out, Greg?
I'm sorry, I, I was, I was looking at, at a document. Say that again.
Is it okay if we have Nicole explain how a bidding process versus seeking quotes works? So that way, everybody, when we're having this conversation, can see exactly what is entailed behind those two conversations?
Sure.
Process, I would put together a bid document with Don's help. Don would do the scope. And we would, um, publish it on a website. We would put it on BizNet, which is the state of Connecticut, place to post, uh, work that's being done in public facilities. And we would post it into local newspapers. It would give people an opportunity to come meet with Don at a specified time to walk the job. And so, Don could explain any unique job. They had the information they needed to do the quote or the bid. And then they would send in at a prescribed time, sealed documents, which would be bids on pricing for the job. And if we did do a bid, we would be obligated, uh, absent of, of clear-cut reason, um, to pick the low bidder. And the reason, um, we did go to bid on Agri-science, on all of the different contractors, and the reason being, we were using state funds. So, the state requires you to do competitive bids with the use of state funds. Now, we're not using state funds in this instance, but we are using taxpayer funds. So, you do have an obligation to your taxpayers. Um, if it were me in this particular instance, that you've already gotten one quote, I would be a little bit worried about Train's reaction to us putting out a competitive bid after we've already been in negotiations with them because another person could come in behind them and say that they had a leg up on the bidding process because we worked with them prior to putting the bid out.
So, don't put it out to bid. Call in contractors and get estimates.
You can absolutely do that. You can absolutely just, other contractors for quotes. Sure.
And, and that's where I just wanted to make certain that we were all talking in the same way. So, at this point, if what the board is asking for is seeking quotes and not bids, I just wanna make certain that we, we're using that proper.
Oh, I understand.
Okay, yeah. Don, how long is it gonna take to get two other quotes? I mean, you're, you're not gonna pick up the phone tomorrow, call someone. He's gonna call you back in an hour with a quote. Weeks. The guy's gonna have to come out and look at the site. They're gonna have to see the specs and plans and whatever you've got in order to give a quote. I mean, th- th- we're not talking about somebody coming in and, uh, a- and, and, and installing a window.
You're in the best possible environment to get the best possible price night now. People are starving. Companies are starving. You got a pandemic in your country. People are looking for work everywhere. So, I don't see it's an issue. I just see the issue is very simple. We need to protect the board, Region 12 Board of Ed on how we do business. That's all. That's my issue. It's not who does the job. It's not being afraid of choosing the person that currently put the current units on there. But it protects the Board of Ed because some of these members aren't gonna be here in a year or two or three, but the reputation of the board goes on forever, no matter who's on the board. So, that's my only issue. It isn't the vendor. It's us as an entity. That's how I look at it.
Greg? I have Jim on the phone. He, he was unable to connect, uh, so he'd like, his mute isn't working, so he would like to make a motion.
All right.
Jim?
Approve that Region 12 entered into a contract with Train for replacement of the HVAC units at Chappaq at a cost not to exceed nine twenty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
All right, so i- if I understand the motion, Jim, what you've said is you moved the Region 12 entered into a contract with Train for replacement of the HVAC units at Chappaq at a cost not to exceed nine twenty-six, five twenty-five, and fifty-four cents. Is that correct? All right, I think that's in the affirmative. Uh, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mary has seconded it. Further discussion. Okay, we'll take a vote. Sue, call the roll, please. Skip me.
Joe?
Yes.
John?
Nay.
Jim?
Yes.
Alex? Alex?
He's muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Justin?
Yes.
Jen? You're muted.
Jen, you're muted.
You're muted again.
No. Thank you, Jen. Lisa? Michael?
Yes.
Julie?
Nay.
Pete?
No.
Mary?
Yes.
And Greg?
Yes.
Seven yes, four no. Motion passes.
Okay. Next item on the action list is to consider, if appropriate, uh, approve the transfer of two hundred twenty-eight thousand eighty-four dollars to the one percent non-recurring capital reserve fund. Nicole, do you wanna address anything related to this? Uh, this is one percent of our last year's budget? Or this year's budget?
For your budget, correct. And we, we do have the funds, an analysis that I've done in the last couple of weeks. We do have the funds to make the transfer prior to year end, and I would recommend that, that we make that transfer into the one percent fund.
Is there a reason we should not wait till later in the year? It's already made, for God's sakes. Year's almost over, I guess.
We can decide to, tonight, to make it and to make it, you know, the third week of June. It doesn't have to be made immediately, but the board does have to approve it in order to make it. You can set a date.
Okay.
Jim has said so, moved.
Okay, Jim has moved it. Is there a second?
I second.
Moving second, is there a discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Actually, forget it. Sue, can you do the roll call? It was, listen, I can't see people's hands.
Okay. Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Jen? You're muted.
I know. Aye, sorry.
That's okay. Michael?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pete?
Yeah, aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Greg? It's unanimous. Motion passes eleven to nothing.
Okay.
Can I ask Nicole what the balance will be after that addition?
Sure, it's late. Let me get my calculator. A million eighty-eight.
Eight, one million eighty-eight thousand? Cause at the last F and O, we were considering the maintenance garage, possibly using some of that million eighty-eight thousand to do Don's garage, but I guess that'll come up in the future meetings.
There, there's no rush. And I think, you know, at this point, you know, I know we, we've got a lot that's on our plate and uncertainties. So, as things unfold, we can certainly look that over when we have our conversation of, um, what came off of our budget as well.
Okay, Alex?
Yeah, I've always been a big proponent of the garage, uh, which Don has asked not to be called Don's Garage any longer. Um, but I thi- I agree with Megan in the sense that we don't need to decide that today.
Okay. Anything further? All right, if there is no objection, uh, I would declare the meeting, there's nothing else on the agenda. I would declare the meeting adjourned at, uh, nine fourteen.